This is older.
Let it out.
Just run it through.
Six.
And he's making the rules on that.
Oh, Serbia.
When the city was reading everyone's names.
Oh, man.
On the name page.
He had everybody's name.
He didn't do any kids who sounded like your name. It was explicit.
No, it's early today.
Yes, my God. I'm sorry. I got an all bear.
She didn't say.
I got an all bear.
I'm just waiting on her. Just wait around. He will make a lady off.
Oh, the hell I missed that. Was that, was that an email?
You know, it actually. I don't know.
Oh, have you heard of her?
Well, let's see, text, that's why I came. I got your room. Do you find your email message? It's all the same. There, there. Then we give you the.
Lovely background. It's in the past files. Do you just make coffee?
You can use your phone machine if you want.
I have a drink.
Oh, we're gonna do that. You know, we need one. Yeah.
It's about for that. We're on that.
Yeah, so I've been having.
So you got. That's where you're gonna be. Sounds like what she's saying.
I would say.
He must be saying something about.
Yeah.
But he's gonna be calling you, that's right. Okay, we'll get John's paper for me, okay?
All right.
Yes.
All right. People's card, can I read?
Here.
Does. Who's in front? This is. Okay. Maybe we will be able to scare.
You were very famous.
Is it just not that? How bad? So cute.
No.
Oh. Like that's all the. Sorry, man.
Yeah.
But they have this. Yeah, my god. How she is. What I'm talking about.
I can't see that.
No.
So she always. It is all there. She's.
Can you do that? Can you? I know. I wish. So many.
That's why I said I was like, is it the next day? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Hello.
I called to order the Grand County Board of Education meeting at 10:00 PM. Office stage twenty twenty four. May we have the world hall please?
Mr. Flavich? Here.
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt.
Now, Jay?
Yes.
Okay. Because I've got this floor of coal and I'm afraid that I might end up choking. I'm gonna ask if, uh, we can vote to have someone else lead the meeting.
What you can do, you can do because your vice chair is unable to. So if I just, you know, make a motion and I want. Ask every board member, make the motion, uh, to lead the meeting. It's up to second and we'll vote on it. Or say you can appoint somebody to run the meeting, give your chairman, vice chairman, or chair person. I need to.
I'll make a motion, Debbie.
Okay.
I'll second. Okay, Debbie. All in favor?
Okay.
Okay.
Make your special agenda.
All right, okay.
Can you read the mission?
I'll see that. Yeah, okay. So reading of the mission statement will be. Charlie Schmidt, please. The mission of the Grand County School Board is to respond to the needs of all students and empower each child to succeed at their highest potential. This will be achieved through our policy decisions and resource management. Thank you, Charlotte. Can we do a pledge to flag? Could everyone stand please?
I'm allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next on the agenda, um, approval of agenda as presented. Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Wait a second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. Construction updates. Um, approval of pay application thirteen for Grand County ATC in the amount of sixty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Achoo.
All right. Uh, just give you a real quick update. You have this one. And you also have the next one, which is DRE. Uh, which is significant, can't be more. Uh, the, uh, the progress on the ATC is really in its form of a final completion and punch list and those kind of pieces. So that's not really of any significance right now. Uh, DRE is a lot going on there, a lot has happened. Uh, we had either myself or somebody from our office has been there three times. Since we talked the next time, so we're trying to get a lot of, uh, onsite presence. And we've been really good about being there most times that I'm there, somebody's there, Mr. Schiff's been doing the same. So we can get a high level of push and management. Uh, everything seems to be coming together. It will be going right to the end. And as we have always designed, it was not supposed to be completed this fall. But we're getting as much done as we possibly can. Uh, the balance of the completed work is really before that way, which is the back. Uh, the bathroom's up front, all the tile went down, the china set, they're gonna be doing the total partitions now. Uh, totally. All the ceiling grid is up, the tiles go in fairly fast. Uh, there's a very large contingency of electricians there. It's kind of impressive. Uh, the roof this week and the roof, all the white membrane roof is complete. They're just starting down the edge metals. And so what we're working on now is just kind of drawing into a whole way pattern for what it's gonna look like when school comes back. And then we have to shift a lot of this to second shift work, kind of work around because you always get the building taken over already. And a lot of conversation about getting that back part come on, cleaning up all of those boxes, the storage boxes, boxes, all the dumpsters and things. Uh, there's been a lot of movement. You start seeing a lot of the struggles going down, a lot of things are getting received and kind of ruined up. So, uh, that is kind of the biggest thing. Uh, we are looking really good. I always like to think of change orders. They actually showed themselves. We're, we're in a really good place. We had some really nice, uh, allowances that I built into the project, like what we landed some things and we did. Uh, one of the largest things is, uh, we had some flow data that is kind of on the order line for the fire suppression data. So we actually figured booster pump, which in that one, if that file data, we didn't need such credit for that. So I, I, I'll get it myself. I think the beginning of that lens closes out, which is really good. Uh, so you will be on budget or less than budget. Won't be in your contingency, which is really a good place to be unusual. So, uh, we're kind of fighting to keep everybody on target and they open. And these meetings we have once a week, have great participation. I don't care. Twenty-five people in the room, administrators, everybody, you know, races to be getting along well. It's just kind of, who's gonna do what?
How else could be my question? Staff feel like they're prepared for all of the home form, do you think?
They started today.
I'm sorry?
They started today. We had, I think, uh, seven teachers in there today working in the rooms in the four hundred, three hundred section. So they worked. The, uh, the library also.
Oh. Do you have an estimated time that we will be in for the one hundred section of the building?
We're hoping the nineteen.
Well, we have functional bathrooms that first week of school in that one hundred section.
Yes, the, the little, the little.
The hit, yeah.
Well, it's already set. So they said. They're a little guys.
We guess the kitchen and everything will be ready for students to.
Yeah, I mean, all the tiles down, uh, the walk-in boxes are set and, uh. Inspection is Friday. The, the above ceiling inspection is Friday, so, uh, as soon as we get that, uh, we'll be pulled in. Hostages from under school sanitized and all of the, uh, equipment sanitized and all the walk-ins and the refrigerator. There, there's some other things they, they still need to do, uh.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Kind of looks down, but.
Okay, and then, um, I guess we're gonna do the approval of the first one first. So do we have approval of the pay application for the ATC around sixty-three thousand, thousand, four hundred, sixty-seven dollars? You have a second? All in favor? And then, um, as we just discussed, the approval pay application number seven for ERE renovation in the amount of two million, two hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighteen cents. Do we have a motion for that? Second? I'll second.
Yes.
All in favor? Okay, now we have another one, uh, approval of pay application number two for MCE sewer project in amount of of three hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and forty cents. How are we gonna do that? Which got that?
So, uh, all of the pipe is light. Uh, for the project, that pipe has been air tested, uh, and passed the air test. Uh, everything has been, uh, put back as far as, uh, bringing back the whole line, uh, all the way through. Uh, it has been tied into the Wingstown sewage, okay? But what we're waiting on now is old electric to run the electric, the new electric into our list station, which will sit behind our parking lot, okay? Uh, as soon as that hooks, the, the electric is hooked up, then they'll run our sewer line into that. And then, uh, it'll be going, uh, one hundred percent. And, uh, they'll pull out the old tank. Now, already have the dirt there to fill in the old hole and all of that'll be removed and, and we'll be in good shape. They've done a really good job on this project. They, they've, uh, they moved the level pretty well. Uh, and at first, if you remember, we had a lot of rain in that kind of month a little bit, but they've, uh, they expected to be October, but we're gonna be online before school starts, so. Yeah.
Do we have a date for old electric?
Uh, we turned that paperwork in Tuesday, Tuesday. So, uh, we had to fill out some paperwork for old electric, that'll process, I would think next week. Yeah. We have all the controls, all the pumps are set, uh, so it's just a matter of hooking the electric up.
I have a question for you.
Uh-huh.
Um, did you have PVC pipe put in and take that out and put in the HD, uh, P pipe instead? I mean, it was a change order.
The change order was this. Because we did not get a easement from the one property owner, what we had to do is we had to drill under all that property. So for us to do that, we had to change pipe, so we changed pipe and then they gave us a little credit on the other pipe. That was a different pipe that they had to drill underneath that property. And then we also drilled the driveway of Patriots Landing. That, that area right there, we drilled that to keep their business open and, and, uh, not have a closer business by cutting their driveway.
So is the difference between the PVC pipe and the HD PE? I mean, you changed that out or, well, I don't understand what the drilling has to do with it. And what's the, how does the polyethylene is a stronger pipe and it's?
It is. It has to be, it has to be drilled underground. And, uh, it, it's, it's really neat to see how they do that. They, they actually have a, a box that sets out and this box will guide that, that pipe or that head drill that goes through there. So it's a, it, it's a neat process to, to watch.
So you can only do that with the identity and not the PVC?
That's correct. Yeah.
I can hold up the.
Yeah.
Got it.
See, all the ra- all the regular pipe for that is twelve foot sections. And see, when they drill that, that's one piece. There's no, there's no connections underneath for that.
Under that, that number's probably, how hard would they have to do that?
Well, i- it, it was, it was hard because there was both electric and water right there. So we had to go at least, you know, thirty-six inches underneath all of, all of those lines that was there. Telephone was there, cable was there. So they needed not do us a favor.
Right.
Yeah.
Were the people that live on that road all able to connect to that sewer line?
They will after a year because Wingstown will take all of that over.
Excellent.
They'll take all of the, uh, except for the list station, okay? The pipeline, they will take care of. And, uh, they can tap, okay, onto that line and, uh, that'll be through Wingstown after a year. Now, if they do it within the year, then that would be up to you all to decide if you wanted them to do that and how much you would want to charge them to tap onto there.
So that means after that year, it's no longer our responsibility to upkeep. If there was a break, we would not be responsible.
Right, correct.
So how far does it go? Does it go to the interstate?
It does.
Where at?
Um, it's on Caltown's property. I think it's real close to your property there. Uh, it's, it's in the hot. I can get you the layout for that. It has everybody's, uh, property lines and everything on there. It shows where the line goes through.
Okay, is Caltown part of Wingstown or is it part of Great County's district?
That's a good question. Um. I believe, I. Well, I know, I, I know that the cemetery, that Wingstown annexed that. Uh, and I'm assuming they annex Patriots Landing. But I don't know if Caltown would be annexed or not.
Well, annexed them, they probably would be.
They obviously next the whole river.
Yeah.
It's like, yeah, the whole, but that sort of sits on a corner.
But the county paid for that road when they put it back through to the yard, from the stop sign there. The county paid for that road to put that road into the yard back there.
Interesting. Very interesting.
I thought that Williamstown wasn't going to put in this pipe.
What's that?
The sewage pipe. I thought Williamstown decided they didn't want to hook in with the, to, with us.
No, they didn't want to give any upfront money to us.
Right.
Imagine that.
Yes. Yes.
So, yeah.
We, when Mr. Morgan and I met with them, what Mr. Morgan tried to do was for them to go in fifty-fifty with us. And, uh, they, they would not do that.
That was so we'd have a bigger pipe.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and then, um, they also, as part of that, said that they would take that over, okay? A- after a year, they would, they would take that line over and take care of that line. Which that, that will probably pay off for us years down the line.
Can you hear it?
You know, from that.
Yeah.
One other short little comment. So nobody can say there's a conflict of interest because it does not go through mine.
Correct, exactly. Yes, ma'am.
Good deal.
If it went through your property, then J. O. would have been calling.
Okay, so, um, do we have a motion for the approval of this pay application number two for the MCE sewer project in the amount of one hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and forty cents?
I'll take the motion.
And I'll second. All in favor?
I'll read my head.
Okay. All right, um, do we have any reputations there? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night in Green County.
I lost my spot here. All right, I lost. All right, I'm gonna have to go off my paper. Okay. Um, next is recess. Do we need a recess?
We don't need a recess.
Yes. Okay.
You guys don't want a recess.
All right, Charlotte, do we have any public comment?
No, maybe not.
Okay. Um, claims. Did everyone have a chance to look over the claims and do we have any discussion on that?
Mr. Schiff, you asked, uh, Mr. Schiff, you can underlast the, I asked us a big question.
Sure. Um, so at Drummond Elementary, whenever you do a, a remodel like that, you have to make that school asbestos free, okay? So, uh, in the project, Mr. Hayes put a hundred and sixty thousand into the project for asbestos removal. So to date, we have removed all of the asbestos from the four hundred section, okay? We have now removed all the asbestos from the one hundred section. Uh, part of the two hundred section, okay? We did find out when we got into it that the glue that was under the kitchen floor, that glue had asbestos in it, so we had to abate that, okay? That was something that we originally hadn't, uh, planned on. But what happened on that was, is they originally had thought that the doors were asbestos in the one hundred and two hundred wing, okay? Once they got in there and tested them, they were not. So we didn't have to abate the doors, but we did the kitchen floors, so that part kind of equalled out for us. Uh, also, all of the awning around the one hundred section, the old part, all of that was asbestos. So all of that had to be abated. And then what we have left is, is we have the south end of the two hundred section that they'll do next summer. Uh, they'll have the glue on the floor there. Uh, I believe none of that tile has asbestos. I believe it's just the glue. But what we did find out in the one hundred, in the two hundred section where we pulled the white boards off, the glue that was holding the white boards was asbestos, so we had to abate that. So I'm sure we're gonna have to do that in the other part of the two hundred section. And then, uh, we will have to do the glue in the three hundred section. So what we'll have left is we'll have the three hundred section that'll have the glue in the floor. And then in the back part of the two hundred, we'll have the glue in the floor and we'll have the glue from the, uh, what was put in the boards. But we don't think that the three hundred section, because it was built later, that that glue that, that's holding those boards, we don't think that that will have asbestos in it.
How are we doing on money?
We're doing good. You heard what you said.
What I mean, of the hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, how much have we used?
I, I will have to, I will have to check with Brown and all that and see. I'm, I'm not for sure. This last, I think, was ninety. I, I believe it was. And, uh, we had the original four hundred. I don't remember how much that was, but I'll, I'll, I'll check on that and see. And it lets you know how much that amount was for the four hundred.
What happens if there happens to be excess funds at the end of the project? What, what happens to those funds?
Well, I'm not totally for sure, but that has to sit there for a while, doesn't it?
Yeah, it goes, it can be used towards future projects. Uh, but also we have the ability to do the capital funds requests, which we do every year. After so long, those excess funds can be moved over to the general fund, which we do every year already. Um, to the tune of about, in the past, it's around a million dollars, plus or minus a little bit, that we roll into the general fund every year.
So we could potentially use that for our gas.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
That, that usually is probably going to go to the contingency fund, which we are behind.
Well, on the capital.
We, we're, we're at least a million dollars behind in contingencies.
So the capital funds request can only be used for certain things like, uh, payments on the kiss-to-bus payments, on insurance and on building maintenance. And so what we will typically do is we'll do those things ahead of time. We'll pay for those and then once, as we get towards the end of the year, we can do that capital funds request and pay back those funds, which frees up money in the general fund. So you front the money and then you kind of get it back after you pay for some of it.
Didn't the state work on you in the hole?
Well, it's not like in a hole, but our contingency is lower than your comfort.
Lower comfort. But your emergency fund, that's what that is.
We're not in a hole. That's how we.
There's not a deficit and we are not in the hole.
We're not in a hole.
The state requires so much and we have always been a little more than what the state requires. But we, we haven't, we're going down as far as the state level. But we, we are lower than we have been in the past. Just above the state mandated a mess.
Met for emergencies, air unit go out, water.
Right. They don't, oh, the school burns down, gets to be replaced. Something like that.
The contingency fund, just to kind of maybe give a little bit of clarification, is not lower than what it used to be. It's back to where it used to be. Usually the contingency fund ran around that, that mark, pre-COVID money. With the COVID money and, and doing some things that we were allowed to do, like paying the electricity bills, we were able to build up that contingency fund. Then we were able to do a lot of things like stipends and, um, you know, pay for those sorts of things. And that, that's what's got, now, now that all that money is gone, the contingency fund kind of back to where it was pre-COVID.
Any more discussion about the claims?
I can move to go to.
Okay, we have a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Superintendent Travel? I want a motion to accept. Wait a second.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, consent agenda. Discussion with that.
We made you talk about.
Yes, we are.
And we hand them the law. I make a motion to accept.
Okay, we have a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. Old business.
Mr. Schiff, do we have those old businesses?
I don't believe we do.
All right, new business. So we have, um, approval of the certified appeals committee for, we'll need to select an administrator and an alternate. Okay. Yeah, I got that one. Yeah. Okay.
I can't see it.
Okay, that's all right. I can see it now. I got focused in there. Okay. So we have, um, so the request for the board to select one certified administrator and one alternate from this appeals panel. Let me just read all the names of them.
Yeah.
I have Shana Walters, Shannon Rickler, Michelle Lawrence, Riley Murphy, um, her, Mc- Maruth Morris? Did I say that right?
Mary Ruth.
Mary Ruth Morris, okay. Dustin Plunkett, uh, Lee Simpson, Laura Smith, Nicole Davis and Jennifer Compton. Those are those we have to choose from. And we need a administrator and an alternate.
Tina, who was on it last?
Yes, do we remember? Do we remember?
Could we?
Do we have?
We recommend that we, um, do an elementary administrator and a secondary administrator. Um, we do have people that have shown interest. Shannon Rickler has shown interest as a certified candidate. And then Brown and Murphy have shown interest as the alternate.
I'm not, he's very good. We don't usually get him.
Right.
So we just go ahead and.
Okay, so I. And? Okay, so I need Shannon Rickler. Did you say Shannon Rickler?
Yes, ma'am.
As an administrator?
She is a principal at Sherman Elementary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And?
Dr. Riley Murphy, he is the principal at Grant County High School.
Uh-huh, okay.
And he, he has expressed interest in being alternate.
So they don't have to fix, okay.
Okay.
So who do we, do we have the, I guess we'd have to name the administrator, and then we'd have to name the alternate.
So Shannon said she would be the.
Administrator, okay, alright.
And Dr. Murphy would be?
The alternate.
Do I have a motion for this to be on the table?
Yes.
Write the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
We can second, but it's.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, will that be said? Okay. Alright, reports, uh, superintendent's report here. I have a item underneath there is the approval professional work plan for the twenty-four point five. Here, uh, for.
So this is what I shared with you at the work session. I've selected two standards to be my areas of focus, standard one, strategic leadership, and the work that we have begun on developing this strategic plan by the end of the school year. I tell you, alls have been a part of that, the surveys have been a part of that, some committee formation, and work will occur, and some, uh, results of the surveys, so that process of kind of prioritize and kind of identify strategies for the next three to five years is the intended goal of that. And then, uh, standard six, collaborative le- uh, leadership, and that's working together with stakeholders, uh, administrators, and community leaders to develop a common shared vision, mission, and beliefs surrounding the school. So that's what I would submit as my professional work plan for the twenty-four point five school year. So, part, as part of my program, I'll need that to be formally approved.
Okay. I'll have a motion to approve it. Any discussion on that? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. All in favor? Is there anything else, Mr. Morgan?
I would like to give you my best, uh, attempt, you have a special math day, because it changes daily. Uh, so here's where we are now, Grant County High School, we have one math position that is open, and one special ed position that is open. Grant County Hill School, we have one chorus position open. At Mason Corad, we are full. At Dry Ridge, I believe we are down to one classroom position opening, we had two vacancies this morning, but if I'm not mistaken, that principal told me that she was able to fill one today, so we're back to one. Sherman Elementary School, we have one special ed position, Crittenan, we have two special ed positions. Both, uh, Crittenan and Sherman Elementary have done some, uh, redistribution. It'll result in a little bit larger class sizes, so they will have positions that will go in field, but all, all the students will be in a class with a teacher.
What is that class size model of like?
Uh, the highest I've heard, maybe it was twenty-five, twenty-six in one of the schools, that's not for every class. If that's the case, the state-based council will have to do a waiver and approve that. But that principal was also looking at, uh, maybe getting some extra support through instructional assistance, so that they would be.
Alright, um, board members, do you have any reports? D P P, information, finance. So we have our.
I have this report here. We do need to talk around, I'm still waiting on, sorry.
No.
We have submitted information about, uh, our tax situation, as we discussed in the work session.
Yes.
I am waiting to hear back on that. We, so we are still under the forty-five day limit from July twenty-sixth. We will need to, once, in the next week, I'm hopeful, we have all the information, we will need to set a rate, or set a tax rate, in a special color meeting in the office. I, I would touch base again tomorrow to see where we are, because we, we have to be able to move on. I just want to come back to that here.
Brian, do you have anything to add to the finance?
No, just answering questions, yeah.
Any discussion? Okay, alright, um, personnel actions, everyone got to read that, um. Yes. Is that a little greater than, uh, and you've got one position here, and it's greater than, and then it goes to a different position?
They are moving locations, like one said, district office, and they were moving from the district office to a principal's job. Um, I think one of them was, was a principal that was a teacher, and it had the arrow going to.
Principal, okay. Oh, and then I didn't want to spin up and say this. Oh, we know now. Now we know, thank you. Okay, and then, um, a German?
I'll make the motion to the chair.
Alright, do you have a second? All in favor? Thank you, everybody, for coming.